It's, um, let's see, August 17th and this is the Wakefield School District Planning Committee for a withdrawal plan public hearing. If we could all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, could you just start and we'll go around the table and introduce ourselves?
I'm Steve Rutter, co-chairman currently and chairman of the Wakefield Planning Board.
I'm here as a member of the committee plus the chairman of the Wakefield Board of Committee.
Laura Russo, community member.
Judy Mason, I'm the chairman of the committee.
Crystal Colbath, a member of the committee, community member.
Michael Tursey, superintendent.
Beth Sellers, secretary.
And Mr. Fox, one of our Wakefield School Board members, has just come in.
I'll sit. We're here in this four offices.
No, you can sit up there, please.
Right.
Um...
Hi, Crystal.
Hi. In 2013, the Milton School Board put a warrant article on, uh, their warrant to form a planning committee to consider withdrawal from SAU 64. And, um, Wakefield responded in kind and put a warrant article on as well. They both studied it. I believe Milton chose not to go forward with it and voters in Milton agreed with that. Wakefield, once Milton decided not to go forward with it, our committee chose not to go forward with it. But when it was put on our warrant as their recommendation, the Wakefield voters rejected it, which caused a new planning committee. So this planning committee has studied the possibility of withdrawal from SAU 64 and the results are the report that you have this evening. The Wakefield Planning Committee has taken a tentative vote prior to the public hearings and will take a final vote after the two public hearings, Milton and Wakefield. But our tentative vote is to move forward with withdrawal from SAU 64. So this plan pretty much details what we have been doing since April, studying the possibility of withdrawal. So we can go through this page by page. I know probably a lot of you just got this. So we'll go through it page by page and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them for you. Obviously, we've got the table of contents. And then we start with the list of committee members. A little bit about the planning committee members. And the formation, how that took place of the committee. If I go too fast or if you have a question, just let me know. Then we have the two ballots, one from 2013 and one from 2015 with the Wakefield vote. Uh, the first time, Wakefield approved the planning committee by 69 percent and the second time by 72 percent. On page five, there's a summary of our committee meetings, basically what we discussed, uh, different topics. And then pages six, seven, eight, and nine is the actual law that governs how you withdraw or reorganization or new organization. The next several pages, 10 through 14 is basically an overview of the Wakefield School District.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
So your projections on your enrollment, is it, looks like the downward trend with ours or led by ours?
Ours is a downward trend, yes.
Alan, one of you, it's not just something I'll, I'll, thank you.
On page 15 is the history of SAU 64. As each district withdrew. On page 16, we had a meeting with the past superintendent and our current superintendent to discuss, um, possible configurations of employees in a new single district SAU. And a previous superintendent, Mr. Landers, also started a company, um, offering superintendent services. We met with Bat Bay to find out what our costs would be if we were a single district SAU. And it's actually going to decrease our cost $16,000. On page 17 is demographics of the two towns. On page 18 are the different districts that we researched that is similar to Wakefield. And on page 19, you'll find single district SAUs. And one...
Question on the bottom graph there on that chart.
Which page?
19. So they are part-time superintendents and they have three or more schools?
Yes.
With that student population?
Yes. And also you'll find with the three elementary, middle, and high schools, there's some part-time there as well.
You talking about the bottom or the middle?
The middle one as well has some part-time. But there are several three more schools that are part-time.
So you didn't have the costs or anything in the staff or anything like that in your, in your study at all?
For the ones that had three or more schools?
Yeah.
No.
Just go ahead.
Most of the SAUs have their budgets online now. Page 20 is the number of superintendents, assistant superintendents, and financial positions as came from the Hampshire Department of Education. You can see that there's 96 financial positions and there seems to be a trend of moving towards finance managers instead of business administrators. On page 21, there's a chart. And if you look at the single town districts, it hasn't moved much. The total number of districts hasn't moved much, but the number of SAUs has increased from 78 to 91. So there also seems to be a trend of people going to smaller SAUs as far as towns, the number of towns. And the public enrollment, you can see, is decreasing. Page 22 outlines the two different directions that the two different districts seem to be going in. Milton has adopted Common Core and Wakefield is going with the prior Massachusetts standards. On page 23, there's an organizational chart of how we would set up our single district. And on page 24 is the organization, organization, operation, and control of the single district. The current SAU staff and what we've chosen for a single district SAU. Milton can choose to follow what we did or they can, you know, it's totally up to the town of Milton what they want to do as far as employees. These are just examples of what we felt would be sufficient for a single district SAU. So we're going to choose to have a part-time superintendent, a full-time financial manager or a part-time business administrator. We have taken our, the student services director and we're going to combine that position with our special education coordinator at the school level. We'll have a full-time administrative assistant, part-time bookkeeper, our facilities manager and transportation manager, which we currently share with Milton. We are going to add the responsibility to a current position within our school and add stipends for that. Following three pages are the duties of superintendent per code of administrative rules stated in Hampshire. And then we have a short description of what each position we're proposing, responsibilities will be, and job descriptions will be written for each one of those individual positions in detail should we, the voters vote to withdraw.
Just one question.
Yep.
As far as superintendent is concerned, pretend superintendent, does it mean the amount of time, like how many days per year, how many hours per year, or is this going to be, what's the definition for part-time?
Three fifths.
Three fifths?
Yeah.
Meaning it's going to only be three days a week or a year?
Correct.
Well, there was a suggestion that to spend more time during the school year at the office and then less time during the summer. So just because it's three fifths doesn't mean it's going to be three days out of five. Might be five days out of five during the school year, some weeks, and maybe two during the summer.
I was just wondering about how to organize the contract, that's all. That's something we want to consider.
The school board will negotiate with the successful candidate.
What are you going to do because your superintendent is going to be always going to training and how are you going to designate? You're going to take his days of he's supposed to be working, he need, be out of the office training days.
If it's an experienced superintendent?
Right. There's going to be a lot of training for him to be able to go into a car, a cane, things like that.
Hopefully, we'd hire a fully qualified and previously trained employee as superintendent to do that job.
Yeah, that may be true, but even now, even us as members of the board, who's been on the board for a while, we still go retraining or training all the time.
That's the name of the game, I think.
There's always something that's coming up. The federal government's always changing.
That's why, that's why I think Wakefield is moving away from federal aids and all of the assurances that go along with that type of thing.
So you don't have to receive federal money then?
I can't say that. I, I don't know what, how the community would go and all of the other elected officials, but, but the biggest problem that I personally have is too much federal intervention and not enough local control. And the direction, that direction is increasingly getting worse all the time.
But to that point, excuse me, but to that point, Doug, as you can see on page 19, there are much larger school districts than us who have part-time superintendents. And apparently, they're managing to do it, so I think we'll be able to manage quite fine with a lot of our students.
But you haven't talked to any of them?
But, you know, there's Conway with over 1,800 students and they have a part-time superintendent.
But you haven't talked to any of those, how they're doing it then?
No, but they are, but they are doing it.
Yeah, well, we don't know how they're doing it. You're saying they're doing it, but we don't know what they're doing for a system.
What Wakefield's, what the planning committee's, um, job was, was for us to see, to look at Wakefield's.
Yeah.
And we're looking at elements, you know, just an elementary school. We put those in the report.
Yeah.
So that Milton would have something to compare to and see that other part-time superintendents are handling larger districts. On page, um, 29, it's the internal financial controls. We'll continue to use the same internal financial controls as we're using now. They're governed by your school policies. And those school policies are available at saus64.org. The fiscal analysis on page 30, you can see the current apportionment for this year. Wakefield is currently and has always paid a larger share of the SAU services. And you'll see underneath that a comparison of the number of schools, number of students, and the number of staff. And I just found a mistake.
Where?
The SAU apportionment is 934 down here, it's 929.
Right there.
Uh, 934.
That budget.
929.
Oh, it should have been. Well, the budget's right here.
929. You're going to have to fix it because it changed. Well, I can't fix it because that came right out of the, um, book, so I don't know why the book says 934. Hmm?
That's what it would be if that's what the, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but if it came off this chart, that's where our apportionment would be.
But the budget's 929.
Oh, that's, your, the chart you included here is the preliminary chart, it's your estimate of your apportionment. And then when you put the actual warrant together, it has the actual number in there. That's the difference.
There must have been reduction by the school, the joint board.
Just get it down. On page 33, they had an apportionment number, it's the same as those in, 929, 392, that box.
But that's an estimate.
We put the chart out there. Project's available.
On page 31 and 32 is the current SAU budget. On page 33 is the apportionment history. In the last 14 years, the yearly SAU budget has increased $518,000.
I found a mistake. Dollar signs should be down by 301, not 302.
In the last 14 years, the SAU budget has cost the two districts over $10 million. The fiscal analysis. We use the same four scenarios for both Wakefield and Milton. Retaining the current SAU budget, joining another existing SAU, contracting out superintendent services, and developing a single district budget. This committee chose to develop a single district budget. Which is on page, following page 35 doesn't have page number one. Doesn't, it's up a little higher. Oh, 36, sorry. Didn't see it. What you're probably all interested in is the fiscal analysis we did for Milton. And we did the same four scenarios. If they were to retain the current SAU services and facility, there would be a $525,757 increase for the Milton School District. And another option for Milton would be to join another existing SAU and share services.
Is that page 39?
Excuse me?
Page 39?
38.
38. You could contract out superintendent services. Or you could use Wakefield's model for a single district SAU. Or obviously, you could do your own plan. On page 39, we did four, those four options, uh, four options for Milton. Using Wakefield's model. Option one is the same model with adjustments for tech services and maintenance agreements and using space in your existing school facility. What Wakefield is going to do is take an existing modular unit and convert it into office space as a temporary SAU. And then we're going to build, hopefully, if the voters of Wakefield approve it, an SAU office. But this would be a temporary solution. Option two is the same model as Wakefield, again with adjustments for tech services and maintenance agreements, and that's staying in the existing SAU building. Option three, again, is the same with the tech services and maintenance change, using space in an existing school facility. We increased the superintendent hours in option three for Milton and added a full-time student service director, including benefits. And then option four is the exact same thing, except that's staying in your existing SAU facilities. Again, we definitely are not telling Milton what to do, we're just trying to give you different scenarios using the same model that we did with adjustments. You can see in the chart, option one, two, three, and four, what the increase would be for Milton. The benefits of a single district SAU would be that SAU services would concentrate solely on Milton's financial needs. You would have independent control of the SAU budget. The budget committee and voter review and adjustments of the SAU budget instead of the joint board determining the budget. SAU staff could have more time researching grant opportunities. Indirect costs from grants could remain in district. Potential reduction in the cost of the SAU facilities if you had space available in existing facilities. The current SAU facility cost right now for the building that we're renting, and that does include heat, um, maintenance, I think of janitor and such, is $47,000. And Milton's share of that is $20,480. You would have the potential savings over time if you were to build an SAU office on school grounds. And staff, parents, and residents would have convenient access to SAU offices if they were located on school grounds. The only con that we found for Milton as a single district SAU financially was your increased cost. And you can see on page 41, we do project that there will be an increase for SAU services for the Milton School District. And it's expected that Milton's cost for a single district SAU will be higher than Wakefield's with two additional schools, 28 additional employees, and 166 more students. Final outcome of the impact of their budget will be determined by the Milton School Board and their voters. With reorganization of the current SAU, we feel that Milton could minimize the impact. The Milton School Board and their voters will have independent control of the SAU budget. The Milton School District will have a one-year transition period that we've recommended. There's not enough time for either district to try to organize a new SAU between March and July 1st, so we're recommending a one-year transition period. So this would not take effect until 2000, July 1 of 2017. It allows both districts to organize and get their budgets together. The educational analysis on page 42 is the same for both districts, the pros and the cons. Again, um, educational pros for both districts would be that you could concentrate solely on Wakefield's educational needs and improvement of instruction, personalized development plans for staff, additional hands-on time spent by superintendent on-site, the value plans for staff, additional hands-on time spent by superintendent on-site evaluating the effectiveness of new standards and curriculum. Student services director would be on-site for Wakefield, that would be Milton's choice with to do with that. Hopefully, evaluating the services and working closer on closing the achievement gap. And again, easy access for staff and parents. The educational cons for both districts. The superintendent felt that it would be an educational dissonance with the laws of collaboration between districts. And we feel that superintendents and teachers in general consult and collaborate with each other on a regular basis. And there's no reason why the superintendent of each district could not continue to collaborate in areas of mutual benefit and interest to the districts. On page forty-four, the business administrator prepared an inventory list. On July twenty-ninth, the joint SAU board met and a motion was made and seconded to split the cost of a professional appraiser between Milton and Wakefield. The vote was four in favor, five opposed. Wakefield will bear the cost of the appraisal. Also at this meeting, a motion was made and seconded to vote on the apportionment of the division of the SAU assets at the time of separation. Currently, SAU sixty-four holds a surplus fund, and a motion was also made at that meeting to defy the fund balance according to the apportionment at the time of separation. The only liability that SAU sixty-four has is their lease agreement, which if notified by April of two thousand sixteen, the lease could expire on June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen. The SAU could negotiate an additional year to, for the lease to expire on June thirtieth two thousand seventeen, at the same time the withdrawal took place. This would leave no liability to either district for lease agreements. Will, Milton would be free to negotiate a new agreement if they chose. The only other outstanding liability that SAU sixty-four has is a copy of the lease that is due to expire in October two thousand fifteen. The following four pages is a list of the inventory that was done. And you'll find on page forty-nine that we checked with our health insurance carrier to make sure our health insurance would not be affected. You have to have at least fifty enrolled employees. The rates would not change the first year, however, they could change the second year depending on demographics and claims, that it would be for each individual district. On page fifty, it's the transition plan. As I told you earlier, we have decided on a one-year transition period. And then the timeline of what would need to be done over the next three years. It's actually two years, we still have some time left until two thousand fifteen. On page fifty-three and fifty-four is possible to save these locations, and this is geared towards Wakefield. Wakefield right now, we've got an estimate on converting our modular into an office space, and that was twenty-five thousand. So Wakefield's portion shares, twenty-six, six seventy-six. We'd recoup the cost of those renovations in a year. And if we built a building, which we have an estimate of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we'd recoup that cost of that in six and a half years. Milton could do the same if they chose to. Page fifty-five is showing the projected percentage change in population, ages five through nineteen from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty-five. You can see that both Carroll County and Stratford County are projecting decreases in student population. Page fifty-six is just a map of the Wakefield land. And page fifty-seven is a suggested floor plan for modular renovation. And page fifty-eight is a very rough estimate of cost to construct an SAU office building.
Do you have page seventy, should I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're going to have storage in that building?
Okay. Uh, we have a server, with server closet is yes. And we have plans, we made a very large bookkeeping office so that there would be room for file cabinets and storage and that, and also the administrative assistants. We may have to do something about storage. Wakefield has the benefit of having town water and town sewer by our school. I don't know if Milton has that, so the estimate does reflect hooking up to town water and sewer. If we have to hook up to a sewer system, a private septic and private well, that would be an additional cost. And those are just the specs from the modular company that we looked into for modular. The notice of public hearings is on page sixty-one. And our closing comments. That we recommend withdrawal from SAU sixty-four. As I said, a final vote will be taken after our public hearing next week in Wakefield, but our tentative vote was seven to zero. It was unanimous. And the rest is just signature pages once we take our final vote. Yeah.
Are you listening to board number on page sixty-three?
Oh.
Yeah.
He's so quiet up there.
I probably just didn't.
No, I probably didn't hear him yet.
Oh. So, I don't know if you have any questions, comments? We wanted to, I believe we're only required to have one public hearing, but we chose to have the two so that we could have one in Milton and Wakefield, so the guys wouldn't have to travel to us.
Does the town, excuse me, does the town of Wakefield have to have another vote?
Yes, this report will be submitted to the Department of Education. They can send it back with comments. Our understanding is they can't reject it, they can't say you can't do this. They could not recommend it, but the vote is still up to the Wakefield taxpayers.
And that'll be in March?
That'll be in March. Any other questions, comments?
Please do a very fine job.
Thank you. Um, we, we tried to take into consideration, especially with the timeline, how it would affect Milton as well. And as I said, the budget, those four options are just something for you to think about. We're not trying to tell you what to do or how to do it. It's just an example of what we're doing and how Milton could possibly do the same if they chose to, but that's totally up to the Milton voters what they choose to do. Thank you for coming. Any other questions, comments?
When we come, I'm going to make it. I guess it's your choice, but to me, we have everything. Everything is in this algorithm, and I guess I just can't see it. I was on the one with Milton, and we looked at this. It's just not in our interest to do that. It was just something that we wanted to try out, and it just kind of pissed us. It's way too much for the taxpayers, and we're going to see this coming up. But this report is very good, it just, I just, you've got everything we need here. I don't see why you want to, unless it's the common core and whatever the evidence is, I understand it, but there's got to be some neutral, being some place to reach. We have a building, we have all the resources we need. Going down to Long, it's going to be a trial and error.
There's no other questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing. There is another one in Wakefield next Monday night, and anyone from Milton is welcome to attend. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.